Session is called to order. Before we proceed further, may I request the Honorable MP Syaikh Abdul Wahab to lead us in prayer, may I invite everyone to stand up.
Bismillahirrahmanirrahim. Allahumma sholli wa sholli ma ala sayyidina Muhammadi. Walla alihi washahbi ajma'in. Robbana wazalamna amfasana wa illam taghfirlana wa tarhamna lakuna min khasirin. Robbana innana sami'ana munadi yunadi lil imani an aminu bi robbikum fa a'manna. Robbana fogfirlana fa inna kantalgafur rahim. Warhamna fa inna kachur rahimin. Allahumma la, Allahumma la tad'alina zamban pi ha'zal muk'awam illa ghfurta. Wala maridan illa shafaita. Wala haman wala ghaman illa farijta. Wala dainan illa qadayta. Wala hajja tan min hawainna pi ha'zi lihiyat illa antana alqadaa. Robbana fregalinna sabra. Wasabit akdama na wa nsona alqumil kafirinna wal hamdillah rabbana.
Mr. Speaker.
Floor Leaders, recognition.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. Before we proceed, I'd like to extend my courtesies to the Chief Minister, Abdullah of Makakuwa, the Speaker of the Parliament, Attorney Pangalian Balindong, and all officials, officers of the parliament, including the Presiding Officer, as well as all colleagues in the parliament. We'd also like to greet all the staff, all the staff in the Secretariat of the Bangsa Moro Transition Authority Parliament, staff of the MPs, and our guests in the gallery, Mr. Speaker. And we'd like to mention specifically, Mr. Speaker, the contingent coming from the Municipality of Kapai, led by Vice Mayor Musab Gauraki, and some members of the Sangguniang Bayan and other community leaders, also from the same municipality. Mr. Speaker, if they are around, we can hear. Likewise, Mr. Speaker, we are graced by the presence of students coming from the Cotabato State University. We have nineteen registered names. If they can also stand up so that they can be acknowledged by members of the parliament.
Thank you, Floor Leader. The contingents from Kapai, as well as the students from the Cotabato State University are all welcome to the plenary. Also welcome are those joining us via Zoom. We are watching us on live.
On the livestream of the session, Mr. Speaker. Mr. Speaker, can we now proceed, Mr. Speaker, to the recognitions, commendations, memorials and messages, and communications? For this, Mr. Speaker, Deputy Speaker, MP Engineer Don Mustafa Loong wants to be recognized.
The gentleman from Sulu, Engineer Don Mustafa Loong is recognized.
A'udzubillahiminasaitanirradzim. Bismillahirrahmanirrahim. Assalamualaikum warahmatullahi ta'alahi wabarakatuh. Mr. Speaker, esteemed members of this honorable parliament, I rise today with great pride to honor four outstanding individuals whose recent achievements have brought immense inspiration and honor to the Bangsa Moro Autonomous Region in Muslim Mindanao and to the Bangsa Moro as a people. On June 20, 2025, the Professional Regulation Commission released the result of the 2025 June Special Professional Licenseure Examination for nurses administered by the Board of Nursing on June 6 and 7. The examination was held in various international testing centers across Abu Dhabi, Dubai, Al Khorjeda, Riyadh, Doha, Qatar, Bahrain, Kuwait, Singapore, and Taiwan. And of the 1,021, 29 examinations, only 390 passed, resulting in a national passing rate of just 37.9%. Despite this highly competitive landscape, four exceptional Bangsa Moro women rose to the top, securing places in the top ten and proving that excellence knows no boundaries. Let us recognize them. Top four, Shaqi Norin Alama, a proud Tausug and graduate of Western Mindanao State University, San Buanga City. Top six, Lily Jimenez Amil Hamja, also a Tausug from Luzos, Sulu, and an alumna of Notre Dame of Holoc College. Top seven, Hasmin Ong Anayatin, a Magindanauan born in Datupiang, Datupiang Magindanao, and a graduate of Lyceum of the Philippines University Batangas. And top ten, Charmalin Om Pok Marak, also a Tausug and a graduate of Medina College in Osamis. These remarkable women exemplified excellence across all the eleven core areas of nursing competency, including patient care, leadership, and health advocacy. Their triumph is more than a personal victory. It is a powerful testament to the resilience, brilliance, and determination of the Bangsa Moro people wherever they may be, especially the youth of the Bangsa Moro. Mr. Speaker, esteemed colleagues, this milestone is also a reflection of the Bangsa Moro government's steadfast commitment to education, translated not just through policy pronouncement but through tangible and sustained action. We see this in the deliberate expansion of scholarship, support for licensure examinations, the strengthening of teacher development, and investments in digital tools and educational infrastructure across the region. Through the Ministry of Basic Higher and Technical Education, we continue to champion inclusive, accessible, and quality education, ensuring that no learner is left behind. Of course, we understand it's still a long process, but what is important is we celebrate these milestones. The success of these Bangsa Moro top-notchers reaffirms a truth we hold dear. With the right support, Bangsa Moro learners can and will compete and succeed at the highest levels, not just nationally but globally. As public servants, we are called to protect these gains and continue building a learning environment where every dream is nurtured and every learner can thrive. To Hasmin, Lily, Shaqi, and Charmalin, your names will be forever etched in our history, not only for your academic excellence but for the pride and hope you have ignited in your communities and in the Bangsa Moro as a whole. To your families, teachers, and mentors, thank you for the dedication, the sacrifice, and the guidance you have given them. And to every student across farm, your dreams are valid, your potential is boundless, and your government works with you in every step of the way. Mabrookto our top-nature, mabuhay Bangsa Moro, pagpalain sa, pagpalain Bangsa Moro, and magkaisa tayo para sa isang progresibong Bangsa Moro. Wa billahi taufik wal hidayah. Wassalamualaikum warahmatullahi ta'alahi wabarakatuh.
Thank you, Deputy Speaker, Engineer Don Loong. On behalf of the Bangsa Moro Parliament, our congratulations to the ladies scholars who brought honor and pride to the region. Thank you.
Mr. Speaker, we now go to the bills on first reading. May I move that we request the Secretariat to read the...
Mr. Speaker. Please proceed, ma'am.
Hi, okay.
I would like to ask a point of inquiry.
The Deputy Floor Leader, Rasmig Mokisa.
I believe we were continuing the session from last meeting, so we are supposed to accept the amendments on the agenda for today, Mr. Speaker.
Secretary General. Floor Leader.
Mr. Speaker, I will have to check with the Secretariat first. I was not around in the last session. One-minute suspension, Mr. Speaker.
One long-minute suspension.
Speaker, uh, considering the attention or the matter that was faced by, uh, fellow Deputy Floor Leader, Attorney Rasmit Mog, uh, I'd like to move for the amendment of the Order of Business to include, uh, bills on first reading. Uh, I think we were given a copy of the proposed, uh, Order of Business as amended or as proposed to be amended. So, on bills on first reading, this would include BTA Bill number three-six-nine, one, three-seventy, three-seventy-one, for bills on first reading. Likewise, I'd like to include as part of the amendment, uh, discussion or the matter of proposed resolutions, number three-three-three, three-nine-five, five-three-nine. Okay, five-three-nine. And then for bills on second reading, uh, to include BTA Bill number zero-three, zero-five, one-four-eight, one-six-zero, and then Committee Report number one-four-nine. The matter of a, of proposed resolution seventy-three appears in the Order of Business that was approved, uh, in the last session, Mister Speaker, so it stands as is. That's my motion, Mister Speaker.
Uh, there's a motion-
Mister Speaker, may I be recognized?
Yes, but I'll just read. There's a motion to amend the, the Order of Business to include, uh, a copy of which have been furnished all the members of the Parliament, BTA Bill number three-six-nine, three-seventy, three-seven-one, three-three, resolutions three-three-three, three-nine-five, five-three-nine. Bill on second reading, number oh-three, oh-five, one-four-eight, one-sixty. But before, uh, ruling out the motion, there's a, the gentleman from Magindano is recog-
Yes, Mister Speaker. Good afternoon to my colleagues. Mister Speaker, I would like to put into motion and move that the agenda for redistricting be referred back to the committee. I so move, Mister Speaker.
Mister Speaker, we're still in the-
There's-
Amendment of the agenda. Maybe we can, we cannot act on that motion, Mister Speaker, because that has not been, uh, included in the proposed, uh, agenda, Mister Speaker.
Hold up.
So, once we approve, Mister Speaker, there can be a motion when we tackle Committee Report number, uh, for, ano, one-four-nine, for its, uh, referral back to the committees.
Mister Speaker, may I be recognized?
Uh, MP Kadatwan is recognized?
Uh, Mister Speaker, with respect to, uh, the statement of, uh, MP Bayam, uh, since there is a motion to amend the Order of Business, in which case, uh, with respect to that motion, I ob- I object to that, uh, motion, uh, especially pertaining to Committee Report, for the inclusion of Committee Report number one-hundred, one-four-nine, which is submitted by the Committee on Amendments, Revision, and Qualification of Law and the Committee on Local Government.
Floor Leader?
We interpose no objection, Mister Speaker.
Uh, one minute suspension.
Mister Speaker-
Floor Leader, yes.
Mister Speaker, I'd like to, uh, I move that we recognize, uh, MP Kitam.
MP Kitam is recognized?
Hadat. Yes, uh, I move that we recognize him.
Do I withdraw immediately? I just withdraw. Or you do, you ask me? Uh, Honorable Speaker, um-
MP Kitam is recognized.
And, uh, I will withdraw my, uh, current objection to the motion uh, given by the Deputy, the Deputy Floor Leader, the current floor.
Floor Leader?
Yes, Mister Speaker, so my motion is for the inclusion of all the items I mentioned. Maybe it would be good if there were- If we solicit a second?
There is a, a motion to amend the Order of Business. Do I hear an objection? Do I hear a second? The objection having been duly seconded, the same is hereby approved.
Mister Speaker, we now go to bills on first reading. We'd like to request the Secretariat, Mister Speaker, that they be directed to read all the bills on first reading, uh, including the title of the bills, the authors and co-authors, Mister Speaker.
Secretress, Secretariat, please proceed as requested.
BTA Parliament Bill number three-hundred-sixty-nine entitled, "An Act to Upgrade the Existing Wauo District Hospital in the Municipality of Wauo, Province of Lanao del Sur, From a Level One to a Level Two Hospital, Increasing Its Authorized Bed Capacity From Fifty to One Hundred and Appropriating Funds Therefore and For Other Purposes." Author members of Parliament Rasli Adyong, Amirudin Sumagayan, Ali Rakim Mundir, Amir Jakaria Rakim, Ahmad Amir Balindong, and Khalid Haji Abdallah. Co-authors, members of Parliament Baintan Napatuan, Kadel Sinulinding Junior, Solfikar Ali Bayam, Don Mustafa Loong, Susana Nanyatin, Sitipahani Uyioyod, Faisal Intago, Kitam Kadatuan Junior, Rasool Mitmog Junior, Japar Apolomikail Matalam, Tawakal Midtimbang, and Michael Midtimbang. BTA Parliament Bill number three-hundred-seventy entitled, "An Act Creating the Bangsa Moro Identification System and Providing Funds Therefore." Authors, Member of Parliament Swarto Ismail, Shailai Hadumama Alba, Matarul Istino, Amirudin Gayak. Co-authors, Member of Parliament, Amirudin Sumagayan, Abdul Wahab Pak, Amir Jakaria Rakim, Mosber Alauden, Don Mustafa Loong, Tawakal Midtimbang, Hatimil Hassan, Ahmad Amir Balindong, Haber Azarul, Romeo Semah, and Kadel Sinulinding Junior. BTA Parliament Bill number three-hundred-seventy-one entitled, "An Act Mandating All Local Government Units in the Bangsa Moro Autonomous Region in Muslim Mindanao To Establish Public Cemeteries to Allocate an Adequate Land for Such Purpose And Providing for Its Management, Appropriation, and Other Related Purposes." Authors, Member of Parliament Swarto Ismail, Shailai Hadumama Alba, Matarul Istino, and Amirudin Gayak. Co-authors, Member of Parliament, Amirudin Sumagayan, Abdul Wahab Pak, Amir Jakaria Rakim, Mosber Alauden, Don Mustafa Loong, Tawakal Midtimbang, Hatimil Hassan, Haber Azarul, Ahmad Amir Balindong, Romeo Semah, Matarul Istino, and Kadel Sinulinding Junior.
Floor Leader?
Mister Speaker, we now move to proposed resolutions. Uh, we'd like to ask the, uh, Speaker to direct the Secretariat to read proposed resolution number three-three-three, uh, including the title, the author, names of the author and co-authors, Mister Speaker.
Section, please proceed.
Proposed Resolution Number Three-hundred-thirty-three entitled, "Resolution Calling on the Ministry of Basic Higher and Technical Education to Review, Readjust the Min- the Maintenance and Other Operating Expenses of Division Offices, District Offices, Schools in the Bangsa Moro Autonomous Region, and to Regularly and Timely Download or Release the Same, With the End View of Developing Enhanced Guidelines for the Utilization thereof." Author, Member of Parliament, Don Mustafa Loong. Co-authors, Member of Parliament, Lysalamia, Baintan Napatuan, Rasool Mitmog Junior, Amir Baharmawalil, Swartong Buluto, Rasool Ismail, Benjamin Loong, Japar Apolomikail Matalam, Abdul Karim Miswari, Jose Lorena, Abdullah Jisamino Din, Yamela Ramos, Ansparusman, Muhammad Kelly Antao, Eddie Ali, Tawakal Midtimbang, Mujib Abu, Sway Boranon, Basir Utu, Bai Maleh Akandaw, Michael Midtimbang, and Dan Asnawi.
Mister Speaker, I move that we refer proposed Resolution Number Three-three-three to the Committee on Basic Higher and Technical Education.
There's- There's a motion to refer proposed Resolution Number Three-three-three to Committee on the Basic Education. Do I hear a second? The said motion being duly seconded and there being no objection, the same is referred, so referred to the Committee.
Mister Speaker, uh, I move that we direct the Secretariat to read the, uh, proposed Resolution Number, titled the, uh, name of the author and the co-authors of proposed Resolution Number Three-nine-five.
Secretariat, uh, please proceed as requested.
Proposed Resolution Number Three-hundred-ninety-five entitled, "Resolution Supporting the Call of Various Stakeholders to Create a Department of Fisheries and Aquatic Resources," DIFAR. Author, Member of Parliament, Baintan Napatuan. Co-authors, Member of Parliament, Lysalamia, Amir Baharmawalil, Swartong Buluto, Don Mustafa Loong, Rasool Mitmog Junior, Rasool Ismail, Tawakal Midtimbang, Japar Apolomikail Matalam, Michael Midtimbang, and Basir Utu.
Mister, Mister Speaker, I move that we refer this, uh, proposal to the Committee on Agriculture, Fisheries, and Agrarian Reform.
There's a motion for, uh, for the referral of proposed Resolution Number Three-nine-five to the Committee on, uh, Resolution. Is there a second? There, is there an objection? The proposed Resolution Three-nine-five is so referred, there being no objection, and the same duly seconded.
Mister Speaker, I move that we direct the Secretariat to read the, uh, Resolution Number, the title, the name of the author and co-authors of proposed Resolution Number Five-three-nine.
The sec- section will proceed as requested.
Proposed Resolution Number Five-hundred-thirty-nine entitled, "Resolution Urging the International Committee of the Red Cross ICRC, the International Federation of Red Cross and Red Crescent Societies, IFRC, and the Philippine Red Cross PRC, to Consider Using the Red Crescent Embleme in Addition to the Red Cross Embleme in the Bangsa Moro Region." Author, Member of Parliament, Don Mustafa Loong. Co-authors, Member of Parliament, Lysalamia, Baintan Napatuan, Rasool Mitmog Junior, Amir Baharmawalil, Swartong Buluto, Rasool Ismail, Benjamin Loong, Jose Lorena, Hatimil Hassan, Eddie Ali, Michael Midtimbang, Muhammad Kelly Antao, Tawakal Midtimbang, Nurred Damiswari, Dan Asnawi, Abdullah Jisamino Din, Denmartin Kahalan, Kadel Sinulinding Junior, Margiani Makasalong, Ali Montaha Babao, Abdul Wahab Pak, Ramon Pyang Senior, Ali Sulaiman, Abdul Karim Miswari, Nabila Margarita Pangandaman, Mujib Abu, Amrosi Makatanong, Basit Abbas, Nabiltan, Hamid Malik, Bai Maleh Akandaw, Tarhat Amaglangit, and Japar Apolomikail Matalam.
Mister Speaker, I move that we refer proposed Resolution Number Five-three-nine to the Committee on Rules.
The proposed Resolution Five-three-nine is moved to be referred to Committee on Rules. Is there a second? The same is, uh, the said motion is approved, there being no objection, and the same duly seconded.
Mister Speaker, at this point, uh, we'd like to remind, uh, members of the Parliament that if they want to associate themselves, uh, in relation to the bills on first reading as well as the proposed resolutions, they may do so by submitting a filled-up, uh, form that is included in their kits.
Thank you, Madam Floor Leader.
Okay, and at this point, Mister Speaker, we now move to the bills on second reading. May we request, Mister Speaker, that, um, we direct, we- we direct the secretariat to read the number, the title, and the name of the author and co-authors of BTA Bill Number 03.
Section, please proceed as requested.
BTA Parliament Bill Number 3 entitled, "An Act Mandating the Establishment of Comfort Room with Efficient Water and Cleanness Systems in Every School, Defining its Scope and Coverage, Appropriating Funds Therefore and For Other Purposes." Author, members of Parliament Bayintan Angpatuan. Co-authors, members of Parliament, Amir Bahar Mualil, Rasol Mitmug Junior, Lysa Lamia, Swartong Buluto, Don Mustapaloong, Rasul Ismail, Ramon Piang Senior, Ahmad Abbas, Ali Sangki, Ibrahim Ali, Hussein Munius, Kadel Sinulinding Junior, Susana Nayatin, Jamila Ramos, Randol Parkasyo, Haron Abbas, Jose Lorena, Nureda Miswari, Sitipahani Uyi Oyod, Tarhatamaglangit, Michael Midtimbang, Basit Abbas, Ali Salik, Romeo Sema, Muhammad Kelly Antao, Hatimil Hassan, Mujib Abu, and Basir Utu.
Mr. Speaker, we'd like to request that we recognize the author of the... The main author of BTA Bill Number 03 for her authorship speech, MP and Deputy Speaker Bayintan Angpatuan.
The honorable Bayintan Angpatuan, Deputy Speaker, is recognized.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker, Floor Leader, to our Chief Minister, Abdurrahman Makakuwa, our speaker, Speaker Attorney Pangalian Balindong. Bismillah, Rahmanirrahim, Assalamualaikum, Rahmatullahi, Taala, Wabaraka Tu. Mr. Speaker, esteemed colleagues in this august parliament, there are moments in our work as public servants when the statistics we read in reports confront us, not as numbers, but as painful truth about our failure to deliver the most basic human dignity to our people. This is one of those moments for what is more basic, more essential, more universal, than the need to use the toilet in privacy, with cleanliness, and without shame. And yet, in many parts of our region, from the island barangays of Tawi-Tawi to the upland communities of Lano del Sur, children are growing up in schools where there are no comfort rooms, no clean water, no safe private space to relieve themselves. Girls miss class during their menstrual periods. Children suffer from infections. Teachers are forced to improvise, and families silently endure this indignity every day. I rise today not merely to file a bill, but to confront this silent emergency, one that has long been normalized in our region. Today, I sponsor a bill that seeks to end this cycle of neglect and bring dignity back to our schools, "An Act Mandating the Establishment of Comfort Rooms with Efficient Water and Cleanness System in Every School, Defining its Scope and Coverage, Appropriating Funds Therefore and For Other Purposes." Mr. Speaker, I ask you to pause for a moment and imagine a child in Tawi-Tawi, a girl in grade four. She drinks water before coming to school because it's hot. But while in class, she needs to relieve herself. There is no comfort room. She cannot concentrate. She feels ashamed. She tries to hold it in, but by noon, she quietly leaves. Not because she wants to skip the class, but because there is no safe, private toilet where she can go. This is not the story I imagined. This is a reality for far too many children across the Bangsa Moro Autonomous Region. In 2024, UNICEF reported that out of more than 200 schools in Tawi-Tawi, none met national worst standards. None. About 80% of these schools received a zero-star rating under the Department of Education's WINS or Water Sanitation and Hygiene in Schools program. Let me repeat, Mr. Speaker, that not a single school met the basic standards for sanitation. Meanwhile, Mr. Speaker, according to the Department of Education's National WINS data from school year 2018 to 2019, only 72.9% of all schools had at least one functional toilet. And just 55.5% met the standard ratio of one toilet per 50 students. For BARM, the numbers are even grimmer. And in the previous arm, that the toilet-to-student ratio of 1 is to 100 or worse compared to the national average of 1 is to 39. Mr. Speaker, these numbers are not just statistics. They are barriers to education. They are health hazards. And they are daily humiliation for thousands of Bangsa Moro learners. What does it say about us? As a government, as a region, as a people, if we cannot provide our children a safe place to use the toilet? This bill seeks to end that injustice. It mandates the construction of standardized, gender- and disability-inclusive comfort rooms in every school in the Bangsa Moro Autonomous Region in Muslim Mindanao. It ensures that these facilities will have clean, private toilets for boys and girls, a separate, accessible toilet for children with disabilities, hand-washing sanitation stations with soap and running waters... water, structures built for durability, hygiene, and dignity. And we are not stopping at construction, Mr. Speaker. These bills also mandates cleaning protocols, maintenance responsibilities, and prohibitions of any form of fee collections from students for their use. These comfort rooms must be accessible, free, and safe, as always. Mr. Speaker, Section 13 of the 1987 Constitution calls on the state to protect the physical, moral, spiritual, intellectual, and social well-being of the youth. Our own Bangsa Moro Organic Law echoes this in Article 9. Yet, we cannot say that we uphold these principles if children are posed to skip school because they are menstruating or to risk urinary tract infections because there are no toilets. We owe them more than chalk and blackboards. We owe them the dignity of proper sanitation. In the just concluded BARM Wash Summit of June 2024, it was revealed that only 66.56% of households in BARM have access to safe water. This bill ensures that our schools do better because schools must be a place where children learn, not suffer. Colleagues, this is about health, dignity, and equity. It is about fulfilling our most basic duty to protect our children. Let us not delay the relief we can bring to every classroom, every child, every teacher, and every parent. Let us break this silent crisis and build back with compassion and resolve. I humbly seek your full support to the immediate passage of this bill. Wassalamualaikum, Rahmatullahi, Taala, Wabaraka Tu.
Wassalamu'rahmatullahi, Ta'ala, Wabaraka Tu. Deputy Speaker Bayintan Angpatuan, thank you for that enlightening sponsorship speech, Floor Leader.
Mr. Speaker, I move that we refer BTA Bill Number 03 jointly to the Committee on Basic Higher and Technical Education as well as to the Committee on Finance and Budget and Management.
There's a motion to refer BTA Bill Number 03 to the Committee on Finance as well as Committee on Basic Education. Is there an objection? Second? The motion is approved.
Mr. Speaker, I move that we direct the secretariat to read the number, the title, the names of the author and co-authors of BTA Bill Number 05.
Secretariat, Secretary General, please proceed as requested.
BTA Parliament Bill Number 5 entitled, "An Act Creating a Sub-District Engineering Office for the Special Geographic Area to be known as the SGA Sub-District Engineering Office under the Magindanao Second District Engineering Office, Appropriating Funds Therefore and For Other Purposes." Author, members of Parliament Bayintan Angpatuan. Co-authors, members of Parliament Lysa Lamia, Amir Bahar Mualil, Rasol Mitmug Junior, Don Mustapaloong, Swartong Buluto, Rasul Ismail, Ahmad Abbas, Ali Sangki, Ibrahim Ali, Susana Nayatin, Randol Parkasyo, Haron Abbas, Jose Lorena, Muslimin Jakilan, Tarhatamaglangit, Michael Midtimbang, Basit Abbas, Romeo Sema, Muhammad Kelly Antao, Hatimil Hassan, Mujib Abu, Basir Utu, and Japara Polomikail Matalam.
Mr. Speaker, I move that we recognize Deputy Speaker MP Bayintan Angpatuan for her authorship speech.
Deputy Speaker, honorable Bayintan Angpatuan is recognized.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker, Floor Leader, and for the information of everyone. The two bills which I sponsored was filed with back 2022 and some of the data may not be applicable especially for the SGA since we already constituted the 63 barangays into eight municipalities. But nonetheless, Mr. Speaker, allow me to read my sponsorship speech for BTA Bill Number 5.
Please proceed.
Mr. Speaker, esteemed members of this august parliament, colleagues in public service, and fellow Bangsa Moro. The Constitution and the Bangsa Moro Organic Law both uphold our duty to deliver essential public services and infrastructure responsive to the needs of our people. One such critical area deserving our immediate and targeted attention is the special geographic area, or SGA. The SGA encompasses 63 barangays that voluntarily and democratically choose to be part of the Bangsa Moro Autonomous Region in Muslim Mindanao or BARM. Or BARM. These barangays are dispersed across the six municipalities of Cotap Batu Province, namely Pikit, Piggawayan, Carmen, Kabakan, Mizayap, and Alyusan, and now reconstituted as the municipalities of Pahamudin, Kadayangan, Nabalawag, Old Kaabakan, Kapalawan, Malidagaw, Tugunan, and Leguasan. Despite their integration into BARM, Mr. Speaker, there remains a glaring gap in infrastructure support and engineering services specific to these areas. At present, there is no dedicated district or sub-district engineering office catering exclusively to SGA. This has led to logistical inefficiencies, delays in project implementation, lack of routine infrastructure maintenance, and equitable access to public works. This bill seeks to address this vacuum. With the establishment of the SGA Sub-District Engineering Office, or SGA SDEO, under the supervision of the Ministry of Public Works, we are taking a concrete step toward improving infrastructure governance, development delivery, and regional integration. This SDEO will assume direct jurisdiction over infrastructure projects in all 63 barangays of the newly formed eight municipalities, enabling a more localized, timely, and responsive engineering service. The proposed office functions shall include the construction and maintenance of roads, bridges, flood control structures, and water resource development systems, among others. They'll also monitor and evaluate infrastructure projects, assess damage for calamities, and manage necessary repair and rehabilitation work, all within the scope and need of the SGA. Mr. Speaker, let us not forget that infrastructure is not just about roads and bridges. It is about access. Access to schools, hospitals, markets, and opportunities. It is a foundation for peace building, especially in areas like SGA that are in the process of transition and full integration into our regional governance. By institutionalizing the SGA Sub-District Engineering Office, we are empowering these barangays to catch up with the rest of BARM in terms of physical development, economic activity, and quality of life. We are reducing the cost of doing business, improving connectivity, and stimulating job creation and private investment. It is, therefore, our collective responsibility to provide the necessary institutional support to ensure that the people of the SGA, many of whom have long been underserved, are no longer left behind. In view of the foregoing, Mr. Speaker, I humbly seek the support of this parliament to the immediate passage of BTA Bill Number 5. Let us build not only roads and bridges, but a stronger, more connected, and more inclusive Bangsa Moro. Pagpalayin Bangsa Moro, Wassalamualaikum, Rahmatullahi, Ta'ala, Wabaraka Tu.
Waalaikum Wassalamu'rahmatullahi, Ta'ala, Wabaraka Tu. Thank you, Deputy Speaker. Bayintan Angpatuan.
Mr. Speaker, I move that we refer BTA Bill Number 05 jointly to the Committee on Public Works and to the Committee on Finance and Budget and Management.
There's a motion to refer Bill Number 05 to appropriate committee. The same being seconded, the motion is approved.
Mr. Speaker, we're supposed to hear the authorship speech for BTA Bill Number 148 as part of the process under the second reading. However, Mr. Speaker, the main author is not present, and therefore, I move that we defer consideration of BTA Bill Number 149 until such... I, 148, until such time that MP Aspar Usman is present to deliver his authorship speech, Mr. Speaker.
There's a motion to defer this discussion or the rendering of the sponsorship speech by MP Aspar Aspar Usman. The same being seconded, the motion is approved.
Mr. Speaker, we move to BTA Bill Number 160. I move that we direct the secretariat to read the title of the bill as well as the names of the authors and co-authors thereof.
Secretary, please proceed as requested.
BTA Parliament Bill Number 160 entitled, "An Act Integrating the Jakat and the Individual Income Tax Return of the Muslim Employees of the Government under the Bangsa Moro Autonomous Region in Muslim Mindanao BARM." Authors, members of Parliament Muhammad Kelly Antao, Abu Hager Iqbal, and Lanang Ali Junior. Co-authors, members of Parliament Basir Utu, Don Mustapaloong, Eddie Ali, Abdullah G. Saminudin, Michael Midtimbang, Jamila Ramos, Ramon Piang Senior, Faisal Karun, Rasul Ismail, Dan Asnowi, Ibrahim Ali, Haron Abbas, Basit Abbas, Tarhatamaglangit, Said Sheikh, Tawakal Midtimbang, Hasem Edilanggalan, Susana Nayatin, Ali Sangki, and Mujib Abu.
Mr. Speaker, I move that we recognize one of the principal authors, MP Muhammad Kelly Antao.
The Honorable Kelly Antao, Member of Parliament, is recognized.
Thank you Mister Speaker. Bismillahirrahmanirrahim. Alhamdulillah, wabiina astainabad. Wassalamualaikum warahmatullahi tala wabarakatuh. May courtesy and respect to our Chief Minister, Honorable Abdulrahman Makakuak, Speaker, the Honorable Pangal yang berindung, to our Presiding Speaker, Deputy Speakers, Floor Leaders, Deputy Floor Leaders, Medir Kolleg, Assalamualaikum warahmatullahi tala wabarakatuh. Today we will be tackling the most difficult agenda for deliberation in the floor of this honorable Parliament. It is most difficult because it confronts us to mix or unite the deductions of two categories, that is the category of tax as a blood life or sustenance of our government, and the Jakat as blood life or sustenance of our Muslim society. A question may arise Mister Speaker, such as can we unite the two categories of deductions? The answer will come from our deep sense of wisdom, understanding, the basis from our laws, the purpose for which it must be spent with the ultimate benefit to the Bangsa Moro, and the last is the process of extracting them from our salaries. The basis for the former is our laws, which is considered among the three inherent powers of the state. Inherent powers are the police power, the power of taxation, and the power of eminent domain. The basis for the latter is enshrined in the verses of the Holy Quran, in which need not to state it because everyone of us knows it. The purpose of both are for public use. This is undeniable to all of us. The ultimate benefits are to sustain the operation of our government with the taxes and to sustain the welfare of our society with the Jakat. The process of extracting from our salaries is quite harmful to our pocket because it is like double payment or double responsibilities concerning only one obligation. Ladies and gentlemen, my guide in sharing, in shaping the proposal for legislation are the experiences in many countries in the Middle East and the Muslim countries outside the region. They united or mixed these two kinds of deduction into one, into only one. Why we cannot follow the same for the ease and convenience of our citizens? In arriving at the point of common decision or conclusion Mister Speaker, we need only the participation of our ulamas, on the one hand, the participation of our lawyers, on the other hand, and the support of our mathematician to wrap up route of our deliberation. So ladies and gentlemen, I know that this is sweet topic to everyone and I just say thank you and prayer for your support. Wassalamualaikum warahmatullahi tala wabarakatuh.
Waalaikumsalam, Honorable Kelly Antao, for that, thank you for that sponsorship speech, floor leader.
Mister Speaker, I move that we recognize again one of the principal authors of BTA Bill Number 160, MP Minister Mohager Iqbal.
The Honorable MP Minister Mohager Iqbal is recognized.
Bismillahirrahmanirrahim. Mister Speaker, all the deputy speakers who are with us this afternoon, my colleagues in this August body, Wassalamualaikum warahmatullahi wabarakatuh. First and foremost, I would like to express my thanks and gratitude to my colleague, Honorable MP Kelly Antao, for my name being included as one of the principal authors. Thank you, thank you very much for that. It's an honor to be part of this engagement in relation to the proposed Parliament Bill Number 160. My manifestation is about informing this August body that while the intention is very noble, but we have to make a clear understanding on the matter because I was privy to the deliberations regarding the purpose, powers to be given to the Bangsa Moro Autonomous Region in Musliminanao even during the early stage of our efforts really to pass what we called then the Bangsa Moro Basic Law, which now becomes the Bangsa Moro Organic Law. And if I see around, there are many colleagues during that time who are also members of the Bangsa Moro Transition Commission Number 2. And prominent of that, I think, I think MP Deputy Speaker Nabiltan, if he's around. Ah, you are there. Oh, thank you very much, my idol. Thank you. It was the intense discussion in the Senate wherein all the members of the Bangsa Moro Transition Commission were present when the issue of Jakat was supposed to be part of the powers to be given to the Bangsa Moro Autonomous Region in Musliminanao. If I remember it right, it was Senator Drilon who stood his ground saying that the issue of Jakat is a pure religious matter. That was his statement and he stood for that. While in Islam, there is no such thing as separation of church and state. Everything falls within Islam. You cannot separate what is earthly and what is further hereafter because Islam is all about anything that concerns the whole creation, especially the creation of mankind. In short, what I'm trying to say here, that on the basis of that argument of Senator Drilon and on the basis of the powers given to the Bangsa Moro Autonomous Region in Musliminanao on the strength of the Bangsa Moro Organic Law and Jakat has never been part of the powers given to the BARM, then I think we should not legislate about Jakat because it is outside of our power given to us by the Bangsa Moro Organic Law. And this is my humble submission for the consideration of this August body. But again, I would thank my colleague, Honorable MP Kelly Antao. And I think you are surprised why I'm manifesting this statement concerning the fact that maybe some of you will question, why, why you are one of the principal authors now? Why are you stating that? Or why are you manifesting that kind of information? So this is my manifestation, Mister Speaker, Honorable Speaker, that for a more educated discussion of the matter, I would suggest, it's not a purpose, it's not a motion, but just for the information because it's just a manifestation that I would suggest with the concurrence of the Honorable MP Kelly Antao. Maybe we can return it back to the committee which is handling this issue. Thank you very much. Wassalamualaikum warahmatullahi wabarakatuh.
Waalaikumsalam warahmatullahi tala wabarakatuh. The manifestation of the Honorable Mohager Iqbal is duly noted. Floor leader.
Mister Speaker, I move that we recognize Deputy Speaker Ishak Mastura.
I joined the manifestation of MP and Minister Mohager Iqbal. Actually, MP Mohager Iqbal was the companion of my father as he was the chief negotiator for the MLF Peace Panel and my father was the senior legal advisor as well, member of the Peace Panel. And in their stand in the negotiation, Islamic institutions have always been for the Muslims. And why is that stand? Because they don't want it to be under governmental authority since we have freedom of religion, we have separation of church and state. When you put institutions of Islam under the government, then it becomes an instrumentality of government. We are not an Islamic state. So they have been very firm in their stand that Sharia and Islam is for the Muslims and you cannot legislate it in a secular environment where there is danger of it being polluted or corrupted or whatever you may call it. So I joined the manifestation of MP Minister Iqbal that we defer or bring back this legislation to the committee. Thank you very much.
The Honorable Deputy Speaker Ishak Mastura is recognized and his manifestations duly noted.
Well, Mister Speaker, we need not bring it back to the committee. We're still going to refer it Mister Speaker. But this is still to be referred to the committee Mister Speaker. So maybe the argumentation for or against the integration of the Jakat can be done at the level of the committee. So we just refer this first to the appropriate committee Mister Speaker so that the committee can start deliberating on the proposed measure.
Motion?
The motion Mister Speaker is to refer it to the Committee on Ways and Means.
There is a motion to refer Parliament Bill Number 160 to refer the same to the Committee on Ways and Means. The same being seconded and there being no objection, the motion is approved.
Thank you Mister Speaker. We now go to Committee Report Number 149. And there is a pending motion Mister Speaker earlier. I move that we recognize MP.
Mister Speaker, yes.
The Honorable MP Sergio Bayam is recognized.
Yes Mister Speaker, I just would like to reiterate. I know it would not hurt that much that we refer back to the committee the agenda pertaining to the redistricting. I have here Mister Speaker, a document from Philippine Statistics Authority and I also have here Proclamation, Presidential Proclamation Number 973. So I think it would be prudent that we may have, we may have a modification to the redistricting in accordance with these two documents. I have here 2024 absent census of population and again Proclamation Number 973 declaring as official the 2024 population count of the Philippines by province, city, municipality, and barangay based on the 2024 census of population conducted by the Philippine Statistics Authority. I so move Mister Speaker. Thank you very much.
There's a motion to.
Mister Speaker may be recognized.
The.
Mister Speaker, I would have to tell it directly to the Deputy Speaker. I object to the motion Mister Speaker.
The Honorable Deputy Speaker Lanang Ali is recognized.
Mister Speaker, I would like to explain my objection Mister Speaker.
Please proceed.
Mister Speaker, if we read the rules, there are stages of legislation Mister Speaker. And the stages of legislation are as follows. Number one, file the bill, read it to first reading, then second reading, then refer it to the committee, and then to have public consultation, public hearing, committee deliberations. And then the committee will meet and decide it and produce the committee report and to be deliberated to the plenary, Mister Speaker. And in the plenary, as a whole, will decide through interpolation and debate and through amendment on what will happen to the bill. At the end of the day Mister Speaker, it is the plenary that decides. If someone is objecting to the committee report or to the amendment, it will go to the division of the House. Yes, committee and amendment. In the period of amendment, there is an objection to the period of amendment, it will go to the division of the House. Whether to accept or not to accept the reason of the good gentleman MP Bayam, it is still the plenary that decide, yes.
Miksabihin, kung nakakumpay po tayo ng mga requirements sa paggawa ng batas, na sa atin sa plenary ang magde-decide. Kung ito hindi mabigat na dahilan Mister Speaker, isa lang pong interpretation ito ang pagbabalik sa committee kundi patagalin ang pag-aproba nito. Mister Speaker, maalala natin, maliwanag po, ngayong July, hanggang July 24, Mister Speaker, ang plenary session natin. Sila po ang nagmandate sa atin Mister Speaker. Naalala ko ang committee sabi, kailangan ito aprobahan sa lalong madaling panahon. Kung ito ay balik sa committee level Mister Speaker, sa tingin ko, maabot kaya sa lingkong ito Mister Speaker? O itatawid na naman ito sa August Mister Speaker? Pag nagsalita ka Mister Speaker, panindigan mo. Otherwise, sa'yo babalik 'yung mga sinabi mo. Mister Speaker, itong batas na ito ay mahalaga. Itong batas idila sa akin sarili, idila sa inyo Mister Speaker, sa lahat po, sa bulwagan ito. At sa buong Bangsa Moro Mister Speaker, mahalagay po ito. So nararapat Mister Speaker, naaksyonan natin ito sa lalong madaling panahon. Itong batas na ito. Bigyan po natin ng tulduk, itong batas na ito. Mister Speaker, hindi lang para ito sa atin kundi para po sa lahat ng Bangsa Moro. Maraming salamat Mister Speaker.
There's a motion to refer back Committee Report Number 149 to the Committees on Amendments and Committee on Local Government. There's likewise an objection from DS Lanang Ali, floor leader.
I move for the division of.
Mister Speaker, before we proceed to taking action, maybe we can benefit from a suspension of the session so that the proponent and the objection to the proposal to take up Committee Report can be refreshed out if that can be done amicably.
Mister Speaker. Yes, magandang hapon po uli ano. Mawalanggalan lang po dun sa ano. I just would like, I would like to humbly ask this August body that the word patagalin be stricken out because hindi po ganun ang intensyon ng inyong.
because hindi po ganun ang intensyon ng inyong lingkod. Sa pagkakaintindi ko po, marapat lamang na bago po tayo magpatuloy sa tinatawag na redistricting. Kailangan po akma at tugma dun sa kung ano ang dokumentong inilabas ng Philippine Statistics Authority na sinusugan at pinutulayan ng tanggapan ng Pangulo sa pamamagitan ng proclamation 973. Yun lang po, Mister Speaker. Maraming salamat po.
Thank you. In the meantime, the session is suspended.
Mr. Speaker may be recognized before we enter the Division of the House.
The Deputy Speaker Lanang Ali is recognized.
Mr. Speaker on the part of the MIF MPs. We are, whether to proceed or not to proceed on the deliberation of this bill. We are ready, Mr. Speaker. In fact, I already prepared my interpolation in debate and my proposed amendment on these particular bills as a speaker. And there has been an instruction from the leadership with the Honorable Chief Minister Abdurrahman Khuwa on this common ground, Mr. Speaker, I should say. Just to inform this august body just to inform this august body, Mr. Speaker. Whatever may be our decision on this, the MLF is ready, Mr. Speaker.
The manifestation of Deputy Speaker Honorable Lanang Ali is noted. Floor Leader?
Mr. Speaker.
Mr. Speaker, MP Bayam wants to be recognized. I move that we recognize him.
Honorable MP Bayam is recognized.
Mr. Speaker, yes, I just would like to reiterate the word "Pampatagal" may be stricken out. Yeah, it was a pending motion on my part.
The pending motion is duly noted, but we have a priority motion which is the division of the House. We will rule on that later on.
Okay, 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 see.
Floor Leader.
Mr. Speaker, before we proceed to the division... to the ruling on the division of the House motion, MP Karun wants to be recognized, Mr. Speaker. I move that we give him the floor.
The Honorable MP Karun Maysitmaid is recognized.
Thank you, Honorable Speaker. Thank you, Madam Deputy Floor Leader. To the Honorable Chief Minister Abdurrahman Makakuwa, the Speaker of the Parliament, Honorable Attorney Pangalian Balindung, my esteemed colleagues in the Bangsa Moro Parliament, distinguished guests, ladies and gentlemen, Assalamualaikum warahmatullahi ta'ala wabarakatuh. History will serve us, our compass, guiding us through the present into the future. When we disregard its lessons, we risk unraveling the very publics of the Bangsa Moro identity as we are building today. Today, we're talking about the redistricting or reapportioning of the district Pramsulu. Mr. Speaker, when I embarked at the proposed Bill Number 347 and 351, a sobering realization struck me. The message of these bills would not merely be a rearrangement of district. It would effectively alter history and betray a promised future for the Bangsa Moro people in Sulu. Let us all be reminded that the province of Sulu is an integral part of the then-autonomous region of Muslim Mindanao Armed. As a result of series of political peace agreements between the GRP, Government of the Republic of the Philippines, and the MLF, witnessed by the international Islamic community, Sulu is the plus point of the first MLF revolutionary armed struggle against the colonial oppressive and tyrannical regime in this country. Many of our revolutionary leaders and armed combatants have voiced their deep concern over the implication of Sulu exclusion. This legal and political predicament stemmed from the January 2019 plebiscite, where the people of the armed were asked to ratify Republic Act Number 11054, also known as the Bangsa Moro Basic Law, the BUE. The High Court stoningly ruled that Sulu, having voted no, must be excluded from the Bangsa Moro Autonomous Region effective immediately. Upon learning of the Supreme Court decision, I could not help but recall the most painful and bloody moments of our collective struggles. In each of those defining moments, our Taosug brothers and sisters from Sulu were with us, fighting not only for territory, but for dignity, identity, and the right to serve determination. This is why the court decision felt more like a wound, a painful wound that cuts deep, a wound that unraveled what we fought so hard to achieve. Mr. Speaker, I do understand that my position may differ from that of many of my respected colleagues in this hall, but I rise today on a personal privilege to express my manifestation and to place on record my firm dissension, or shall we say, objection, whereby I strongly recommend to this honorable chamber to deeper momentarily the passage of these two parliamentary bills, reapportioning the seven parliamentary districts from the province of Sulu as a result of its exclusion from the bar. Meanwhile, we in the MLF and perhaps other stakeholders are still exhausting all possible legal solutions and remedies for the reinclosure of Sulu Province again in the realm of the Bangsa Moro Autonomous Region of Muslim Mindanao, the bar. The parliamentary Bill Number 347 and 351 seek the redistribution of the seven parliamentary seats originally allocated to Sulu among the remaining provinces of bar including SGA, the special geographic area, and the city of Cotabato. I duly respect the mandates of my honorable colleagues in this august body who authored and support these measures. Let me just be clear, Mr. Speaker. I have no malice intention whatever... whichever way to block or hinder the passage and enactment of this parliamentary bill by the majority. However, I do not view this simply as issue of redistricting. To me, it is a breach of solemn promises and a blatant violation of all due proof signed peace agreement between the government of the Philippines, the GPEH, and all the Bangsa Moro revolutionary fronts. Since the inception of the bloody decades-long Bangsa Moro Armed Revolution, the autonomous region in Muslim Mindanao or the armed government has been built upon a series of peace agreements and constitutional commitment from this government. Since the 1976 Tripoli Agreement, the 1987 Jeddah Accord, up to the 1996 GRP-MLF Final Peace Agreement. In each of these milestones, Sulu was recognized as an essential and inseparable component of the envisioned Bangsa Moro or Moroland for autonomous regions. In 1987 Constitution under Article 10, Section 15 provides for the creation of autonomous regions composed of provinces, cities, and geographic areas that share common and distinctive historical and cultural heritage. Undeniably, Sulu shares the Bangsa Moro's unique history and cultural identity. To quote the word of former Chief Minister Ahud Balawak Ibrahim Al-Hads, Sulu is not just... is not only an essential component of the Bangsa Moro by virtue of law, but also by its deep historical and cultural ties to the Bangsa Moro identity and struggle. With this proposed bill, a majority of my fellow members of parliament believes that the seven parliamentary seats of Sulu should be reallocated. I must, with the utmost respect, firmly dissent. While it is true that the power of the legis... the power to legislate, the reinclosure of Sulu into the bar lies with the Philippine Congress and ultimately with the people of Sulu. However, as member of the Bangsa Moro Parliament, we are not powerless. We can and must urgently and collectively urge Congress to pass legislation that would restore Sulu to its rightful place in the Bangsa Moro. Mr. Speaker, if we are to remain champions of moral governance, then we have a moral obligation to reserve these seven parliamentary seats for Sulu. This is our commitment to our fellow combatants and martyrs from Sulu who bled for the served governance we now enjoy. In my recent visit to Sulu, many of our Taosug brothers and sisters expressed confidence in the leadership and direction of the Bangsa Moro Autonomous Region of Muslim Mindanao, the bar. There is a growing sense of belonging despite the exclusion of their province. There is a strong sentiment from the people of the return... the people for the return of Sulu to its rightful place in the bar. Sulu's exclusion has left a wound, a wound that if neglected may pierce the very foundation of the Bangsa Moro government. It undermines our collective identity and sends a chilling message that these regions founded on decades of struggles can be fractured overnight. Assuming that future reinclosure of Sulu can be simply addressed by passage of another law by the future members of the parliament restoring the seven seats is to gamble with Sulu's future. It is an act entrusting the future of Sulu to a future Bangsa Moro parliament where possibly the current revolutionary members of this may no longer be part of it. So, what can we do now and must do is to reserve the seven seats for Sulu for the future and in doing so, we commit ourselves and future parliamentarians to act with urgency towards its reintegration. Hence, pushing election through with the seven seats preserved for Sulu, then we can create a moral and legal obligation to lobby Congress for Sulu's rightful return to bar. Therefore, I earnestly appeal to the wisdom and conscience of this august body, let us defer the passage of these bills. Let us not erase Sulu from the Morolandia map or in our memory and in our mission. Let us instead reaffirm its rightful place among us. We must and we shall return Sulu to the Bangsa Moro. Pagpalain ang Bangsa Moro. Allahu Akbar. Wassalamualaikum warahmatullahi ta'ala wabarakatuh. Thank you very much, Mr. Speaker.
Waalaikumsalam. Floor Leader.
Mr. Speaker, I believe that that is just a manifestation and we now go back to the pending motion regarding the committee report on whether it should be brought back to the joint committees of amendments and local government, Mr. Speaker.
Before we divide the House, Secretariat, can we make a physical count of the members of the parliament?
Mr. Speaker, upon instruction to the Secretariat to make a physical count, we have 56 members of the parliament who are physically around. Thank you, Mr. Speaker. Fifty-six. Five-six.
Fifty-six and... therefore, what is the number to carry on or defeat the motion? Twenty-nine? Twenty-eight plus one, twenty-nine. There is a motion to refer back Committee Report Number 149 to the Committees on Amendments, Revision, and Qualification of Laws and on Local Government. Those who are in favor of the motion say aye. Okay, I stand corrected. Those who are in favor of the motion, please raise your hand. I've already stated the motion again for the benefit of the plenary. The motion to refer back Committee Report Number 149 to the Committee on Amendment, Revision, and Qualification of Laws and the Committee on Local Government. Secretariat, please make the physical count. Ready? What is the count, Secretariat, for the record? Those who are not in favor of the motion to refer Committee, Committee Report Number 149 to the Committee on Amendments, Revision and Codification of Laws and on, and to the Committee on Local Government, please raise your hand and stand as well. Okay, those who are members of the parliament who wish to vote abstention for the referral of, or of the motion to refer Committee Report Number 149 to the Committee on Amendments, Revision and Codification of Laws and to the Committee on Local Government, uh, please stand up. Secretary General, for the benefit of the members of the parliament, kindly announce the result of the voting.
Yes, Mister Speaker. For those favoring the referring back the measure to the committee, we have thirty-one votes. For those who are not in favor, twenty votes with one abstention, Sir Speaker.
Total number of votes? Fifty-three.
Fifty-three.
Okay, na. The motion to refer back Committee Report Number 149 to the Committee on Amendments, Revision and Codification of Laws and the Committee on Local Government is carried having received the vote, majority vote of thirty-one as against those in favor, twenty-two with one abstention. The motion is approved. Floor Leader.
I believe, Mister Chair, that there is another motion when we were discussing Committee Report Number 149.
Thank you, Floor Leader, for reminding this representation speaker to, the most, there's a pending motion, fire motion by the Honorable Sir Yobayam to strike, strike off the statement earlier made. Do I hear a motion, a second, an objection? The motion of MP Sir Yobayam to strike off the records, there being no objection and the same being Julie Second, that is hereby approved. Floor Leader.
Uh, thank you, Mister Speaker. Uh, at this point, Mister Speaker, I will yield the floor duty responsibility to fellow Deputy Floor Leader Attorney Rasmit Mung. I need to attend the technical budget hearing of the Ministry of Social Services and Development. We now move to the next item and the, uh, floor, the Deputy Floor Leader will manage the floor at this point, Mister Speaker.
Uh, thank you, Honorable Minister Raisa Jodjuri for the service and, uh, the Honorable Deputy Floor Leader Attorney Rasmit Mung is recognized in her stand.
Mister Speaker.
Yes, Deputy Floor Leader.
We only have one unfinished business left, proposed resolution number seven-three-three. And, uh, this has been pending for several days, Mister Speaker. Then we open the period of interpolation and debate.
The proposed, uh, resolution seven-three-three?
Yes, Mister Speaker, if there's no one interested for interpolation and debate, Mister Speaker, I move that, uh, we defer it, uh, we, we, we move, we, we have an omnibus motion to close the period of interpolation and debate and amendments so that we can pass this resolution, Mister Speaker.
There is an omnibus, uh, motion to terminate the period of interpolation and debate? Do I, may I, may I, Mister Speaker? Come, add the
One-minute suspension, Mister Speaker.
One-minute suspension.
...
Thank you, Mr. Speaker.
Thank you, Deputy Speaker. Mr. Speaker, considering those are manifestations, eventually the rules will have to make the calendar and there will always been opportunity for the Chief Minister to request us in special sessions in case we are needed on the following months, Mr. Speaker. So with that, Mr. Speaker, I again move for the adjournment of this session until tomorrow.
There being a motion to adjourn, same July 2nd, there being no objection as the motion to adjourn is approved. Huh?